Ms. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Magnner.
Here.
Mr. Callie.
Here.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Shulist.
Here.
Ms. Sinyard.
Present.
Mr. Butler.
Present.
Mr. McDonald.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Present.
May I all please rise for the prayer and pledge. Mr. Anderson, if you could lead us in prayer.
Please, oh Lord, this evening, help us do the will and the business of the city, citizens of Fairview and the surrounding neighbors. Help us and guide us to do the right thing and have good thoughts and think about how the business of the city should run. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
The flag of the United States of America. In due republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move to approval of agenda. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Butler, Shulist. Call roll.
Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Sinyard.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Callie.
Aye.
Mr. Magnner.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
President, I mean, aye, sorry.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Do we have any citizen comments this evening?
We do. The first one is Mr. Fred Rosenberg.
Good evening.
If you could please state your name and address for us.
I'm Fred Rosenberg. I live at 7454 Cox Pike. That's the intersection of Cox Pike and Northwest Highway. Okay. The little yellow farmhouse, basically. Basically, I want to just say one thing is that I really appreciate the board, especially the planning board, because in a future life, or a past life, I should say, I was a commissioner on a county zoning and planning commission where Purdue University was located. So I'm well aware of the stresses you guys may have. I was also a regional manager for a large housing development. And developer and housing, it was National Homes Corporation, which most of you probably have never heard of, but they were the largest in the U.S. at one time. What I'm here today is for some observations about Bellhaven. I know Bellhaven's 500-plus lots. That represents about 1,500 new residents to Fairview, which is probably 15% increase in our population. And so that in and itself should be something that you should be concerned about. I believe a development, if it's done right, is good for our community. But there's a couple of things that are factors in this Bellhaven. And one of them is the park, which is a future park, which is going to be located next to Bellhaven. And I understand that the Park Commission has a consultant that's going to be making some recommendations by May, I believe, for the Fairview parks. So the first thing I would, my observation would be is that any decision on Bellhaven should wait to see what the consultant for the Parks Commission would recommend for that park. The second thing is basically, I think our city attorney recommended at one of the previous commission meetings that the zoning, new zoning ordinance should be done, or should have a consultant outside to come in and make recommendations. Am I correct, Micah? And I think that's in the process of being done. Well, if there's any time when a large development like this is here and is coming just before we're ready to change our zoning ordinance, we should step back for a second and see how much that new development would affect the new zoning ordinance. Because if you have variances on the present ordinance, you may make matters worse with the new ordinance. And a zoning ordinance is four large developments. Because a small five-unit development, now, you know, that doesn't have a big impact on the city. But a 500 lot or development has a major impact on our city. And we may never see a larger development in the future of Fairview than we see in Bellhaven. So that's, the only thing I'm asking is, we should step back a little bit before we make a decision and make sure we're doing the right thing at the right time. And like my dad used to always say, do things right or don't do them at all. And so I thank you for your time.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Is anyone else?
Next is Mr. Johnny McDaniel.
Hi, Mr. McDaniel. If you could just introduce yourself and provide your address, please.
Johnny McDaniel, 7273 Northwest Highway. I live pretty much at the end of a lot of the formal development there in the area where they're going to cross into the previous cow pasture and build a good many homes. And of course, I don't have a problem with the development. I understand development has to occur at some point. And the main concern is that it be done in a thoughtful and proper manner. And I feel that, basically, it's headed on that good track. Tony and I have had a lot of conversations at developer there. And he's building nice houses. He's trying to do it right within the character of the community. And I want to appreciate that. I think that it could have gone another way and could have been a lot denser development, a lot, a lot different sort of homes than Tony's planning to build. I think his, or ideal for the development, if it's got to be done, he's the one that seems to be on the right track. And I'm thankful that he is there in the driver's seat with that. The main concern that I have is that the road that comes through there, obviously, they're making some modifications to it. And they're going to run it across, in, straight into the field, the cow pasture, you might say, to serve the other homes in the development there, which is understandable. And then they're going to have a turn lane on the right, I understand, to go to the right for the people that don't want to go straight into the, into the path, the main primary path of the road. And that's, and that's good. The main concern that I've heard so far is that they want to keep the road straight and go into the field if they can, which makes some sense on the surface. But when you, when you think about the fact that it's going to three lanes to allow for the turn lane, and that turn lane would go off to the right, if you look back down, maybe the last, oh, 500 feet of the road or so, before it gets to that point, the road has veered somewhat to the left on the previous paving and slight widening that they did 12, 15 years ago. It was all done on the, on the left side. Actually, that sharpened the turn, probably should not have been done that way at the time, but it was. But now, if the road's got to be widened, if you widen it on the non-residential side of the street, well, there, there's another cow pasture that's really not even used these days for cows. It's just open field. If you take that territory for that next lane, that would not only go in 500 feet back or so and coming forward, would prevent that veering left of the road, straighten it out even more effectively than they've described needed to be done, and prevent the need for taking the easements or the property from the last few residences on that side of the road to accomplish this. It's kind of obvious to me, and I think any thinking person, that if land's got to be taken to widen the road, which I see that it does, it's better to take open field than developed and upgraded property fronting, long-established homes. That can easily be done. It can be.
Mr. McDaniel, I hate to tell you, but you're over three minutes here. If you could just wrap it up.
Okay. Well, that's good. It can easily be done, and it would keep the purpose right. I just submit that that would be a better idea. And I'm just here to put that thought forward in everybody's mind.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Is there any others?
That's all.
We'll move on to approval of the minutes, starting with the February 14, 2023 work session.
Make a motion to approve minutes.
Second.
Callie Williams. If you could call roll, please.
Mr. Callie.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Magnner.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson. Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Sinyard.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
And then we'll do the approval of the minutes for the February 14, 2023 meeting of the Planning Commission.
Move to approve.
Butler, Mr. Anderson, if you could call roll, please.
Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Magnner.
Aye.
Mr. Callie.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Sinyard.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Move on to new business. Item number one, PC Resolution PC 1023, Master Development Plan, Bellhaven subdivision, 513 building lots on 251.16 acres, map 021, parcel 21.01. Current zoning RM8 PUD. Property owner, D.R. Horton. Is there a motion on this item?
To approve.
I'll second.
Butler, Sinyard, and staff, if you would like to add your comments.
Staff report for PC 10-23. The project is Bellhaven Plan Unit Development. This is the Master Development Plan. Mr. Jay Easter of Reagan Smith has submitted to the City of Fairview request for Master Development Plan, Plan Unit Development of the Bellhaven Development. The property contains 251.16 acres and is currently zoned RM8 PUD. This project is located at map 21, parcel 21.01, and is located on Northwest Highway and Elrod Road. The property was annexed into the city in May of 2006 and subsequently zoned RM8 PUD. The original planned unit development, formerly known as the Trails of Brownland Farm, approved the zoning of RM8 PUD in 2006 and permitted 725 residential units. The plan has changed since the approved due to public sewer service no longer being available. The number of lots has changed from the originally approved 725 units to 513 units. An onsite sanitary system is proposed and located on 29.1 acres of the property. The approved plan in 2006 had a connection to Highway 96, and this connection has since been removed at the City of Fairview's request. The project property has been reviewed by staff and meets the base zoning bulk and air requirements of the RM8 PUD established in 2006. Reagan Smith is proposing ingress egress to the project by means of three access points from Northwest Highway and two access points from Elrod Road. Roadways as shown in the Master Development Plan shall meet the City of Fairview standards for said road profiles. All internal dedicated roads will have a five-foot minimum sidewalk on each side of the road with landscaping to follow the City of Fairview standards. Reagan Smith was required to submit a traffic impact study for the Bellhaven development. That report was submitted with a date of August 22, 2022. Plan sheets have been provided showing the location and dimension of all roadways, drive aisles, entrances, sidewalk, parking and loading areas, refuse collection areas, mailbox delivery kiosks, access, and other pertinent surface items and meet the requirements of each item. For purposes of the preliminary master development plan, the developer has agreed to work with the City of Fairview for the Northwest Highway roadway improvements, and an executed development agreement shall be completed prior to the approval of the final site development plan. A plan set has been provided showing existing man-made site features, including fences, walls, structures, buildings, pavement, cemeteries, archaeological features, above and below-grade utilities, hydrants, and roadway infrastructure, as well as natural features, including topography, tree canopy, hydrologic features, and all associated buffers. The calculations of natural features and proposed landscaping components are as follows. With 10% required open space, there is 40% provided. The streetscape landscaping shall be one tree per standard lot. A transitional screen landscaping of 30-foot buffers are shown along the disturbed area. Additional landscaping may be required at site development plan once, once grading plans have been submitted. For the amenities, a 1.5-acre amenity area, 3,200-square-foot pool, 3,500-square-foot cabana, 2,500-square-foot playground area, and two miles of natural service walking trails have been provided. The applicant has provided a slope analysis of the site included with the plan sheets, and the plan set is required to follow the stormwater ordinance. Conditions of approval for the Bellhaven PUD. All remaining staff comments to be addressed and approved by staff. Plans set to be approved by all utility providers prior to preconstruction meetings. Portions of the City of Fairview Capital Improvement Plan to expand Northwest Highway to a three-lane collector to be paid prior to the site development plan approval in the amount agreed upon by the City of Fairview and developer and approved by the Board of Commissioners. Provide documentation of all applicable state and federal permits prior to preconstruction meetings. An approval of the master development plan shall be valid for three years from the date of Planning Commission approval. Any modifications to the approved plan shall be submitted to the city for review and may result in Planning Commission reconsideration. That is all I have for Resolution 10-23.
That's it. Appreciate it. Is there anyone here representing the applicant that would like to take, come up here and add anything they would like to add?
Well, we're happy to be back. I'm Jay Easter with Reagan Smith, here with D.R. Horton and the full development team. I think Micah stole most of my thunder with this detailed staff report. But I would like to point out the green space exhibit that this commission asked for last time. We provided. I'm happy to walk through the different percentages of all the green space if that's needed, as well as the other supporting exhibits we submitted with the resubmital. This is an approved RM8 PUD that we agreed upon last time. We're seeking a modification to and resubmitted to come before y'all. We're here to address all your questions. And if I need to walk back through all the changes, I'm happy to. It does reduce the density. We did move access points at the request of staff. We reduced the number of homes, and we increased the amount of open space throughout the development. So I think all in all, this is a plus for the project. Again, we're happy to answer your questions and help keep this moving forward.
We will open it for discussion.
I have a question. I just wanted to reiterate. You said that it went from 725 to 524?
513 homes.
513.
Yes, ma'am.
I really appreciate the diagram that you did that I asked for. It was very helpful.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, a couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
If I may. Can you help walk me through, first off, in each phase, where's the mailbox pull-off? I see one for phase.
We have a centralized mail kiosk within the amenity center for the single-family development. And then down in the northwest corner where the townhomes are, there's another mail kiosk located right there for them.
Point of order. He has a light. He's shining on this map back here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If the Commissioners want to see it, they can't see that. They can see the one that's above you. So if you can turn that microphone. Yeah, no, it's, I don't think it works on the television. That's okay. Thank you. Anyway, I just want you to know what, he's making it easy for you by pointing at it. Appreciate it. Thank you. Continue. Go ahead.
Okay, so there's parking designated for that.
Yes, sir. There's dedicated parking for both.
Okay. Couple of comments. That was in the comment response letter from the staff. I'd like to just double check. One of the comments was, "Off-site improvements are not yet finalized." Can anybody speak to the details of that particular comment?
I can speak to some of it, but I can also let staff speak to it. I believe that's in regards to the road widening. We're providing the right-of-way reservation that staff has asked for, but I think they are still working on definitive cross-sections and alignment on how it's going to run through there.
Okay. Do we have to know when our staff will kind of have that resolved?
That's a condition of approval, I believe, is what Mr. Sullivan would tell you.
Thank you.
And so that will be worked out, and it's a requirement, assuming if it gets approved, that will be something that they have to finish and complete.
Thank you. That clarification was helpful. And then there's still a variance request for minimum lot at critical lots. Is that, is that true?
There are critical lots that are identified on the, on the plan as, at the request of staff. I'm not aware of a variance that I'm asking for, for any lot size.
Is the variance no longer applicable?
The minimum lot size in the previously approved PUD was 5,400 square feet. Our minimum lot size is 7,500 square feet.
Okay. Just two more quick questions.
Yes, sir.
Stream structure at road, so up there near the amenity area, I noticed there's a, there's a creek structure that crosses. The roads aren't labeled. It's near lots 164, 165. Is there a structure that allows that range?
Yes, sir. We will have to get an ARAP permit to cross that, but there are structures that allow us to cross that.
Okay. I noticed some structures on some of the others. I just didn't see one for that particular lot. And then last question, can you walk us through the stormwater by phase, just to see how, how are we handling stormwater, for instance, in phase one or two, to make sure that we are not shedding that on neighbors?
Okay. The, yes, there's preliminary grading associated with this middle. There are stormwater ponds located throughout the neighborhood. I can, I can point to them behind you. I can't point to them back there.
If you will, please. I'd appreciate that.
Okay, that's fine. All of these areas along here are stormwater ponds that will, will be catching detention, as well as there's another one here, here, here. There are ponds that will be catching things around the wetlands. So each drainage basin has stormwater allocation to it.
And is it so that each phase has, we've gone through the calculations by phase?
So the way that that will go, I guess, first phase, it will be looked at to make sure that any disturbance with that phase is captured properly with the right detention, so that there may be some that, once it gets to the, to the development plan phase, beyond this, individual grading, more precise grading, that the ponds, the location of the ponds in phases may change a little to accommodate one or two phases at a time. So that will be addressed through every single phase to make sure that detention is met through each phase.
Okay. And the staff has the ability to review that?
Correct.
Obviously. Okay. I guess one last question as well. There's, there's a lane dedicated for fire truck access off of, is that the multifamily? And that has to cut through the wastewater treatment area to what is labeled as a fence and gated access point?
That's a fence and gated access point for emergency vehicles, as well as access for the utility district to access the drainage field.
So have we, do we have any comments from the fire department about, you know, does that require Knox box? How do they get access through the gate?
Typically, how those work, where the gates are, there will be a Knox lock on that. For everybody, a Knox lock. It's with the Knox Company. It is a lock specifically keyed for a key that only fire apparatus in Fairview have. Each city has their own key designed for that. So there will be a gate proposed there. It will be locked for the fire department to have access, as well as, like Mr. Easter said, utilities to have as well.
Is that something common that we have throughout the community? Is there other locations?
We have several throughout the community. Couldn't put you a list of where they are right now, but it is something that is common, that the fire department is a part of from the beginning.
All right. Thank you.
So in regard to this, will this meet the new stormwater regulation? Be adhered to the new stormwater?
Yes.
Another question. On the, on the initial submittal, there was a roundabout at the Elrod intersection where it teed onto either phase in either way. And so Elrod had some, some site improvements. And so is there any plan for improvements from Elrod, from that intersection or access point to, towards Northwest? So we've, we're going to have improvements on Northwest, then we're going to leave to Elrod as an existing, and then go back into the entrances there. And then there's also the perimeter trail terminates at Elrod there. And so is it terminating to existing Elrod where there's no, there's no walking paths or sidewalks? So would, I guess, it's a long question, but is Elrod going to have improvements from that entrance back to Northwest to match all the existing, the other roads that are improving?
I can answer half of that. And then I'll have to ask for help to answer the other half. Micah, if you can, if somebody can take me to the, the 2008 plan, I can explain why the roundabouts were there and why they're, why they're not. Or I can try to do it from here. In the 2008 plan, there was a connection at Northwest Highway. I'm pointing back behind you. And the road ran continuously all the way through. And the project actually had two roundabouts, one here and one at Elrod here. Those were for traffic calming, because that was basically a neighborhood collector running through, through the development that went from Highway 96 all the way over here to Dyce Lamplin. Now, if we go back to the new plan, you'll see that, that connection's not made that way. There's no direct connection to get. There's internal traffic calming built into the neighborhood where you have to stop, turn, make a left. So the roundabout is not needed as a traffic calming device in this, in the new layout. Micah, can we go back to the new layout? As you, as you can see here, we have an access point here that brings us into the neighborhood and to get over to here. And then we have a dead-end cul-de-sac here. There's no connection across the wetlands here any longer, and there's no connection to 96. So there's not that neighborhood-type collector running throughout the entire neighborhood. Now, the, the trail does terminate here at Elrod and come down to a crosswalk that would cross over Elrod at that intersection and then pick back up that allow you to have the neighborhood connection between the two sides of Elrod. I don't believe, but I'll have to ask the traffic engineer, that the traffic study warranted any widening or additional lanes or improvements on Elrod from our intersections north towards highway, towards Northwest Highway. Is that right? Okay.
It just feels like Elrod's now going to be more or less an internal road of this development. And so how soon behind will the city have to come and add sidewalks for connectivity to your, to the development or improve the road, because it's an old road that needs improvements? And so I just asked that question. Is you're going to leave Northwest, you're going to have all these great improvements, and you're going to leave to go to existing older Elrod, and then come back to the neighborhood with a new improved road, too? It just seems better fitted to do, to do it at the same time, if that makes sense. Construction, traffic, and stuff's just going to put harm on that existing road. And so is it proper to go ahead and do, and do it now, or we're going to have to come in right behind once you complete and, as a city impave, you know?
Now, if construction traffic tears up Elrod, I'm, in most jurisdictions we work in, the, the developer would have to have a haul route and bond or make accommodations for making sure the road is not destroyed throughout his construction or, or have to repair it.
That's fair. We have had a practice of late to make improvements on existing roadways that front the developments, and that's kind of similar how it's going to be used by that, those people, just to capture the stormwater, to capture the sidewalks, to have connectivity and stuff. And so that just kind of stood out to me.
Can I redirect that question? Were you saying, when you said the developer will, are you saying that you guys will follow through?
No, now, I am not a developer. I'm a landscape architect and land planner representing the developer. So if I misspoke.
Okay.
But Patrick, if I'm incorrect, some- But Patrick, if I'm incorrect, somebody correct me, but a develop, y'all, the developer will not tear up the public road and not, and not, not repair it. That's correct.
Question for staff to expand that question. Are there long-term plans for L-Rod with sidewalks?
Currently, I don't know of any roadway improvement that would have that along with it. As was said earlier, there is a group looking at that park area and what could be done there. There might be some sidewalks proposed internally there as well as along that road. But outside of that, we do not currently have that as a road to do construction on as the city.
Any additional comments or questions?
Chairman, I have a few comments, but I want to let the planning commission have their, their go.
Sure.
Then I'm happy to, I'm happy to wait.
Was there anyone, anyone else that wanted to make a comment? All right. Floor is yours.
Okay. And so I don't want, Mr. Rosenberg made a few comments, and so I want to address those. And I want to remind this body of, of their duty with regards to this type of matter, what the standard review, review is. And we discussed that now two months ago, I guess, my first meeting. And so what we have here is property that was zoned in 2006, RM8 PUD. And under our zoning ordinance, the zoning has not changed. That PUD is exactly the, the way it was. And so if not for the sewer issue, they would be entitled to build 725 homes, that kind of density. It's only because of the, the step system that's required that now you're getting a, a project that's much less dense to the tune of about 200 units that are less. As to Mr. Rosenberg's comments, the, as far as the parks consultant and the zoning ordinance, I agree, those are important things, but neither of those things change the applicable zoning ordinance, which is the 2006 rezone. That's your, that's your customized zoning ordinance for this property. So even if the city adopts a new zoning ordinance at some point in the future, it has nothing to do with this property. The, the parks consultant won't have anything to do with this property and this project. In fact, this body's only duty and only question you should be asking yourself is, does this preliminary master plan substantially comply with the 2006 RM8 PUD? The standard review is arbitrary and capricious. This means that when you vote on this item, you need to ask yourself, does this project with staff conditions substantially comply with that, that zoning ordinance, customized zoning ordinance as adopted in 2008? If it does, and staff and myself believe it does, you've heard Mr. Sullivan say that staff believes substantially complies, I've reviewed it thoroughly, more, more thoroughly really than, than I would like, but it, it, we believe it substantially complies, and that's what staff is telling you, then you must vote to approve the preliminary development plan. Whether the project is popular or, or whether it's wanted or not, that really has nothing to do with it. Your, this body is, is an appointed body. It's not a legislative body. And so the, the task is ministerial. Your legal responsibility as a PC member is not to substitute your personal opinions and prejudices for the objective analysis of whether it substantially complies with Fairview's zoning cord, zoning code and the 2006 master plan. To do otherwise places the PC and the city in legal peril. And so I want to make, I wanted you to hear that from me, and I won't repeat it every time we review a master development plan unless I, unless I feel like it's needed to remind you of your duties, but it's important to remember what our scope of review is here at the PC. Those things that were, were talked about as far as the parks consultant and the zoning ordinance, those would have been things that would, should have been thought of in 2006. That, that ship has now sailed. And so we have a very limited scope of review here. Does it substantially comply? Does this plan substantially comply with the ordinance? And you can look at your, you can look at your code, your zoning code, and there's eight or nine factors, and what staff is telling you is that substantially complies. And in fact, it's a much better plan than this original plan because you're, you're saving about 200 units of housing. And that's what they otherwise would be entitled to build if not for the step system that's required because of the, the problem that Fairview's had with their, with their wastewater system.
Thank you for your comments. Does anyone have any questions or comments after hearing that?
Does the planning commission have the say over the materials used on the exterior of the homes, size of homes?
Current PUD, the PUD has material specifications that were put into and approved in 2008, which are still in effect, and we are complying to as well as square footage requirements and the number of senior living housing that is supposed to be distributed throughout the neighborhood.
Could somebody remind me of the exterior materials and?
You have.
And I believe I said 2006. I meant 2008, so.
There are 16 notes that are being continued from the 2008. In those, and I'll speak just to the, the homes, except for senior housing, all homes shall have a minimum of 2,000 square feet. At least 25 senior housing homes with a minimum of 1,500 square feet shall be provided. Maximum number, number of lots south of L-Rod Road shall be 171. All home, their all-house exterior shall be brick, stone, stucco, or hardy plank siding. And those were continued from that 2008. And then one more that would be specific to the lot, all driveways shall be hard-surfaced. Those were included.
Is there a percentage on the hardy?
No, ma'am.
So that means that the whole house could be hardy?
What? Patrick can come on.
Patrick Pitts in land acquisition with D.R. Horton. We will do a variety of masonry, brick and stone accents, a brick-water table. There may be some homes that are full brick and stone as an option, but most of the exterior will be hardy with brick and stone accents.
If I remember correctly, back in the day, there was a minimum of, a minimum hardy that could be used.
So I can answer that. This is a customized zoning ordinance for this specific property. By its nature, it's a variance from what would usually be included in straight-zoned property. So a PUD by definition is, is, is property that has a customized zoning, and that zoning was put in place in 2006, and that zoning has not changed. And so if they substantially comply with the materials that were part of that 2006 rezoning, it's, it's not anything we need to be discussing now, quite frankly.
I was on the planning commission in 2008 when this was brought to us as brown, Trails of Brownland, Brownland Farms. We had, in my recollection, there was only allowed 20% hardy, and the rest of it had to be brick and stone.
Mr. Sullivan, can you address that? It should be in the, in the plan detail, and Reagan Smith probably can address it as well.
Looking at the site notes for what was recorded, it's in flat book 50, page 106. It says approved by city council on July 3, 2008, and that's preliminary plan and development. The site notes, all house exterior shall be brick, stone, or stucco, or hardy plank siding, unless somebody can see otherwise somewhere. I do not see any percentage requirements on those notes.
And that was consistent with my review and understanding of what was approved in 2008.
So basically, these homes are going to be mostly siding with just a band of brick or stone unless someone chooses to pay for an upgrade.
That, that's, that's a fair statement.
That's all.
Questions or comments from the board? All right. If you can call the roll, Ms. Jones.
Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Ms. Senior.
Aye.
Ms. Shoeless.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Nay.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Callie.
Aye.
Mr. Magnner.
Nay.
Ms. Williams.
Nay.
Mr. McDonald.
Vote passes five to four. Moving on to.
May I make one comment?
I appreciate the developer spending the time they've been back here, to my knowledge, four times with this, making an effort to try to comply to the city and changing the sewer system. I do realize that some of the exteriors may not sit well with us, and some of the neighbors around there are definitely not interested in this volume of, of residents and cars and everything else, but I, I really want to compliment them for trying to appease all the, the problems that have come up. Thank you.
I'd like to add a comment too, just for informational purposes. This will now move on to the board of commissioners. There will be two readings of that correct and a public hearing. That's correct. So there's opportunities for opinions to be heard, more discussion to be had. But just keep that in mind. Planning commission moves on to the board of commissioners now. Moving on. My apologies, someone should have yelled at me. Moving on. Is there a motion for that?
Motion to approve.
All right. Shoeless, Mr. Anderson, call the roll, please. Or I'm sorry, not call the roll, city staff, or staff comments, my apologies.
Staff report for PC 11-23. The Borden Place subdivision with the site plan, site development plan, before you. SEC Engineering has submitted to the city a fairview request for site development plan approval of Borden Place subdivision. Project is located at map 46, parcel 18, and is located on Crowcut Road adjacent to the Deer Valley subdivision. This property is 25.02 acres and is currently zoned RS20 single-family residential. The project property has been reviewed by staff and meets the base zone bulk and area requirements of the RS20 zoning bulk regulations, with the setbacks being 35 front, 20 rear, 15 side. Borden Place subdivision is proposing ingress egress to the project by means of one entrance off Crowcut Road. SEC Engineering was not required to submit a traffic impact study as the site does not meet requirements relative to weekday peak hour trips. A hydrologic determination was completed, and there is a designated wetland and stream on site that are shown with the proper TDEC required buffers. There are two proposed detention ponds located towards the rear of the property. SEC Engineering provided a cluster box unit with two parking spaces and one ADA stall. Plan sheets have been provided showing the location, dimensions, and design of all roadways, entrances, sidewalks, parking, access, and other pertinent surface items, and meet the requirements of each item. The conditions of approval for planning commission resolution PC 11-23. Approval is contingent on the applicant obtaining permission for removal of all obstructions located within the site triangle from adjacent property owner of 7218 Crowcut Road prior to the pre-construction meeting. All remaining staff comments to be addressed and provide, approved by staff prior to pre-construction meeting. Plans set to be approved by all utility providers prior to the pre-construction meeting. Provide documentation of all applicable state and federal permits prior to the pre-construction meeting. And the approval of a site development plan should be valid for three years from the date of planning commission approval. Any modification to the approved plan shall be submitted to the city for review and may result in planning commission reconsideration. That's all I have for PC 11-23.
Thank you. There's anybody representing the applicant or here, or the applicant would like to join us?
Good evening. Richard Howes with SEC.
And then if there's any questions, we'll open it up to the board.
I have a quick question. On the drainage plan, primarily, I think it's lots 124, 25. It's on the plant's south edge.
Yes.
How are we, how are we preventing stormwater from draining onto the adjacent property across the property line there? I didn't, in certain areas of, of that new contour plan, I could see where we've created swells, but along that steeper slope, it just looks like we're pitching right onto the adjacent properties.
The lots are all graded to drain to the road. There's a little bit on the back that will fall off and go to the property next door, but all of that slopes down towards the back of lots 122, 123, and 124. And there is a ditch that is planned to bypass that water around and down to the stream.
Do you have sheet C10, 1.0 available that you can pull up, please?
Is that classified as a drainage easement or a drainage right-of-way?
Don't have it.
There's going to be a drainage easement on the back of lots 122, 123 for sure. And the rest of it is, I mean, we're, we're cutting in a ditch on the back of those two lots, and then the rest of it is on the neighborhood, the next door, the natural swell that's already there.
So the owners of those lots will be responsible for keeping it clean and, and draining?
Since we don't have sheet C1.0 available, I just have a concern. It's specifically lots 124, 125, 126, 127, all have higher contours.
Yes.
For, I would say, at least half of those sites that pitch towards the adjacent.
It's just the last five, five to 10 feet of the lot. The rest of it pitches, there's, there's swells along the lot lines to push the water to the road.
Okay. To the road. This is along the, the bottom property line that separates.
Correct.
From that adjacent parcel night, or it looks like here, Leonard Dotterey's.
Correct.
Property.
City staff, y'all feel like y'all have, I feel like there's a lot of drainage going into this wetland, which I know it needs water to continue to come off the property into it to sustain the wetland, but during construction, do y'all have the manpower to come inspect this because this is going to be a lot?
Yeah, that's something that we'll work with the developer from the very beginning and site visit and make sure that everything complies within the TDEC permit.
Would these be considered like critical lots that you'll get the site plan for individually, being the swells that are happening and making sure like we're not grading into a garage and that kind of thing?
So the good thing about this, this grading plan is each of the lots are already shown their bench grading. So if there are any changes during the home construction, then those would be brought to staff, but the way that they. But the way that they graded these lots, they'll be graded the same way and no different when a home gets constructed on site. So the grade shown on the plan will be the final grade.
And one more question. I think there was a, might have been a comment about sightlines regarding traffic. Have we addressed that to your satisfaction?
Yeah, so they provided a figure in the submittal. The site triangle looking to the south along Crowcut. And that, you know, making sure that there aren't any obstructions in that, and that's one of our conditions. Just to make sure that any vegetation that's overgrown and prohibits the, you know, required sight distance for that curve, that that be taken care of, so.
All right, thank you.
Additional questions or comments? All right, if we could call the roll, please.
Ms. Schulist.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Magnner.
Aye.
Mr. Callie.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Motion passes nine. Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'm going to accuse myself from item three. I do not have a direct conflict of interest in this, but in the prior phase, I have an interest.
PC Resolution PC 12-23. Final plat, Goodwin Farm subdivision. Two lot, two building lots, one development lot on 35.76 acres. Map 042, parcels 065.03, 065.04, 065.06, 0.07, as well as 0.08. Property owners, Innovated Construction LLC. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve PC 12-23?
There is a second?
I'll second.
Callie Senyard? And city staff?
Staff report for PC 12-23. It is a final plat for Goodwin Farm subdivision. Mr. Tim Ingram has submitted to the City of Fairview a request for final plat approval for the Goodwin Farm subdivision. The project is 35.76 acres and is zoned RS20, with two lots less than five acres fronting on Highway 100, and the remaining lot to be used as a development lot. Conditions of approval included in Planning Commission PC 12-23 for the Goodwin Farm subdivision. All staff comments to be addressed prior to the signing of the final plat. An approval of the final plat should be validated for filing for one year from the date of Planning Commission approval. Any modification to the above plat shall be submitted to the City for review and may result in Planning Commission reconsideration.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, and, or, I didn't, address I don't think is appropriate here.
Tim Ingram, 7326 Fernville Road.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Can I just clarify? So we're approving these, the plat of the two lots that are off 100, and then the other ones are just an open neighborhood at the moment? No lots, subdivisions to it, even though they originally were slices?
The entire property were original slices, roughly five acres each, if I'm not mistaken.
Seven.
Seven acres each. A plan came before you a couple of months ago for the larger portion of this to be designed to subdivision. With that, the two lots to the north were split off, not part of the main body of the subdivision, but as just two building lots. What this does is removes those two building lots from the majority of that subdivision, allowing the development to continue there, but go ahead and have these two lots be ready for building. So what is shown as those individual lines, those will be removed with this plat so that it is all one body. And then, once the approval goes through with that subdivision plat, you'll see those lots for the larger section.
Yeah, and those two lots shown there were shown in the development plan for the major neighborhood, so.
I think that was just my confusion of exactly what we were doing.
Yeah, these two lots were on the preliminary plan that was approved because there was some discussion regarding those lots and their entry point on 100. But these, none of the infrastructure for the rest of the development ties to these two lots, so it only made sense just to plat these now.
Any additional question or comment? If we could call the roll, please. Ms. Jones.
Mr. Callie.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Ms. Schulist.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Magnner.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Give Mr. Butler a moment here to rejoin us. PC Resolution PC 13-23. Annexation 7305 Overby Road, map 069, parcel 21.00. 4.9 acres. Property owners, First Baptist Church of Fairview, Inc. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve PC 13-23.
Second.
Callie Williams. And we will pass that to city staff for comment.
Staff report for PC 13-23. This is an annexation request by the First Baptist Church in Fairview. First Baptist Church, the owner of 7305 Overby Road, has submitted to the City of Fairview a request for annexation. 7305 Overby Road contains 4.9 acres. This project is loc, or this property is located, map 69, parcel 21, which is on Overby Road, across from the existing First Baptist Church. The properties directly surrounding this project are zoned either RS40 single-family residential or are unincorporated. The plan of services is included in the Resolution PC 13-22. And I'll do a quick read. For the letter, they did submit a letter on, City of Fairview, on behalf of First Baptist Church of Fairview. Authority has been granted to Mr. Peavy as representative for the First Baptist Church to complete the request for rezoning on church property. And that is where we're at for PC 13-23.
Thank you. If there's any here, anyone here representing the applicant or the applicant themselves that would like to join us? If not, we can go ahead and open it up for comment and discussion.
Is anything adjacent annexed into the city already?
The corner to the north touches, and then I believe that is the only piece within...
The one across the street is too.
The, okay. Directly across the street is as well. So yes, across the street and the corner. Sorry, I couldn't see that on the map.
Have any idea what the intended use is?
Maybe the easier question is, is coming in RS40?
It is coming in RS40. That was not included in the letter, no sir.
This is curiosity question. There's going to be improvements to the Overby intersection eventually at that corner. Do the improvements come back as far as this parcel? Or do they stop prior to that?
The original improvement plan was to stop prior to that parcel. The extent of that was to go right to the corner of that triangle.
Okay, that's right, sure.
Any development, I'll add this, any development that they do on the property would have to meet our regulations, so sidewalks and so forth being added there.
Additional questions or comment? Hearing none. If we could call roll, please.
Mr. Callie.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Magnner.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Schulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero. Item number five under New Business, PC Resolution PC-14-23. Rezoning 1327 Highway 96 North, map 018, parcel 29.00. 3.97 acres. Property owners, Brian Spicer, Ken Carger, and Tim Ingram.
Point of order, I'd like to point out that this doesn't have original zoning or what it's to be zoned to.
That's something the city staff might have available that could provide?
Well, we will.
It is in the resolution overlooked that. I do apologize, but we will get that corrected on anything moving forward to the board, but it is included in the resolution, so I don't see any issue with that as it stands, unless you do. Mr. Carter?
Then what is it?
What's the zone that's going to be rezoned? I think that's the question.
Current zoning is CG Commercial General. Proposed zoning, RM20 multifamily residential.
Mayor, you are correct that it's not labeled there, but on the next page, I think it is. Just, I'm not sure if you noticed that or not, or if that was relevant to your call out, but it is there, just for your information.
That was, that was my fault. I do apologize.
Do we have a motion to discuss?
I make a motion to approve this for discussion.
I'll second.
Schulist, Mr. Anderson. If city staff would like to add to their comments. Thank you.
Staff report, PC 14-23. This is a rezoning request for 1327 Highway 96 North. Tim Ingram, one of the owners of 1327 Highway 96 North, has submitted to the City of Fairview a request for rezoning. 1327 Highway 96 North contains 3.97 acres. This project is located at map 18, parcel 29, which is located on the corner of Crowcut Road and Highway 96. The properties directly surrounding this project to the west and south are zoned CG Commercial General, to the east IG Industrial General, and across Highway 96 to the north zoned RM20 multifamily residential. The applicant is requesting RM20 multifamily residential zoning. The parcel is listed as Interchange Business Employment District in the 24 Comprehensive Plan, with appropriate land uses listed as retail, restaurant, office, light industrial, multifamily residential, and civic institutional. Letter of intent, we would like to rezonate this property to RM20 to allow for apartments or condos. There are no staff comments and no conditions of approval, and that's all I have for PC 14-23.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ingram, if you would like to add anything from your perspective, or if there's, the board has any questions for the applicant. Go ahead.
Do you know yet how many units?
We do not. We haven't started drawing the plans, of course, because we don't want to draw a plan that we can't use. I have, I have had some initial conversations with the fire chief on height requirements, because it will be, we do plan on doing a multi-level condos. So we, theoretically, we would like to get around 75, but we don't know till we get to designing the plans and then the site plan. We won't really know exactly until then, but that'd be our goal, was for 75. You said condos, so it's not apartments, it's condominiums? That is our plan, is condos.
It's kind of, I believe there was a property across the street that kind of had similar situation, if I remember right. It's kind of a unique call out where the land use said it was RM20, but the zoning was something different. And I think in that situation, is that accurate? Is that how it shook out, if I remember right?
As far as on the comp plan showing?
Yeah, it was like a gray area, if I remember. Does anyone else help me?
Yeah, I have it open.
The business corridor district and business employment district, which could support light industrial, commercial, multifamily. So it could be any of those.
The RM20, yeah. Or the RM, yeah.
And the property across the street, I believe that's what you're referring to, was rezoned, I think within the last year roughly, to that RM20. And I think that's what brought up this conversation earlier, is that the appropriate zoning classifications listed in the comp plan don't necessarily call out the RM20 designation, but with appropriate land use having that multifamily residential, and with this being a guide that we're using. Staff sees that this would be something appropriate for the land use in that area, that corridor, and then close to the interstate, the interchange.
I appreciate that, yeah. I would, I would agree.
Mr. Sullivan is correct. The property across the street was rezoned within the last 12 months. We own that as well. And we had planned on going full speed ahead on that site, but with current market conditions and interest rates, we just, we decided to do something a little smaller scale at this time.
So is this true that the property just to the southwest corner of Crowcut, that is actually industrial? And then we're surrounded by commercial to the immediate west and northwest. Is that correct? So we would have...
Across Crowcut is industrial, yes, sir. And then there is commercial beside it, yes, sir.
Okay, so this would be a multifamily in the middle of industrial, commercial zone?
Yes, sir.
It's commercially zoned, but there's nothing on it but residences. Residences right now. There's no commercial on the adjacent property.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. Ms. Jones, if you can call the roll, please.
Ms. Schulist.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Magnner.
Nay.
Mr. Callie.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Motion carries eight one.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, bonds and letters of credit. Reserves on Chester, Section 1, reclamation bond set at $565,000. Reserves on Chester, Section 2, reclamation bond set at $337,500.
Yes, those bond amounts were communicated and provided in the development agreement that was provided to the developer.
Right. Planning staff, Mr. Sullivan, is there anything you'd like to add?
I've got nothing tonight. Thank y'all for being here.
Mr. Blackburn?
I've got nothing tonight. Thank you.
Good to meet you, Ms. Williams.
All right.
I have a question. I was just curious if we were going to begin the staff review meetings again soon?
You're going to have to fill in the staff review meetings.
Where applicants come to us, and we have the Water Authority, the police, fire codes, possibly me, Chairman of the Planning Commission, sit together and go through projects that will be brought to the Planning Commission.
When we went to the online system, we got rid of those at first. We've reintroduced those this year for any comments that an applicant wants to bring back to us. We've set aside, for the most part, the Thursday after application, after comments go back, but we don't have that as a formal discussion. We had those set on one particular day, and it kind of limited things. We try to meet with the applicants throughout the process because sometimes it's needed prior to that day or... prior to that day, or comments that are generated after. Then, like I said, we've made ourselves available for any questions with the comments right after those go out, so I don't see that being something that we go back to, but if it's something that is needed, we can definitely discuss that and move forward with it.
So who determines if an applicant's project moves to the planning commission?
That's through staff, we go through the comments. Once we've worked back and forth, if there's any comments that aren't being addressed, or if there's anything that the applicant's like, no, I'm gonna go ahead and carry this through, we do at that point. Outside of that, usually, two rounds of comments, sometimes three, gets everything where it goes to the planning commission.
Mayor, if I may, typically the way that would work is that the planning director would make sure that the application is complete, and once the application is deemed complete, and that's engineering, fire, all the things that you mentioned, then it should be put on the planning commission agenda.
So at no time is someone turned down without it coming to the planning commission?
The only time it would be turned down is if the application was deemed incomplete. The application is deemed incomplete, it shouldn't be added to the agenda until it's complete. Usually, the planning director of most cities makes that call. Just as a point of process, I haven't been here long enough to know exactly how it works in Fairview.
Well, back when I was chairman of the planning commission, we had staff review meetings so that we could review as a group, and then it was moved to the planning commission. I don't know, I'm just asking, I don't know when those stopped happening, I don't know, I thought it was a good process because I didn't feel like, you know, one or two people should make a decision on if a project should move forward to the planning commission, that way you've got, you know, everyone, water authority, police, fire, planning commission chairman.
Well, on that, I think it would be improper for the planning commission chairman or any of the BOC members to be at those meetings, because that, because the, in order to be decided by the board, the application has to be deemed complete, and then the planning commission or the BOC, whatever, depending what kind of application it is, then they would have their turn on it. But staff should be deciding whether the application's complete. Now, different cities use different processes. For example, in some cities like Franklin and Spring Hill that have experienced tremendous growth and they have much larger staffs, they do have meetings, in Columbia, they do have meetings, and one or two days of the week are dedicated to having one meeting after another. Other smaller cities might use an online system or may address issues as they come up until the application is deemed complete. A lot of that in cities is, it needs to be a determination based on the staff that's available and what they can handle given the number of applications. So again, I don't have a good handle on that, but different communities handle that differently, and I don't have any idea how it was handled in the past.
It was just like, we had a certain day of the week, you know, just like we have staff meetings on Tuesday morning at nine, we had, let's say it was Thursday morning at nine, and we would have, say, four applicants, they would wait in the lobby, the group of us would be, and I don't see that it would break any open records because only the chairman of the planning commission was in there. Then, when everything was worked through, the chairman of the planning commission had, you know, like more knowledge about what fire said and what, you know, you know, what the water authority said and what the police chief said, so, and he was able to weigh in on that. I'm just, my question here is just, I want to make sure, and just asking the question, is there any applicant that comes to the codes department and asks for their project to move forward to the planning commission and are denied?
If a project comes through and there are issues and each of the department that do the review decline it, that does go back to the applicant for them to resubmit. The reviews are myself for planning, and then codes when needed, to engineering, and then the fire chief and fire marshal are both on that same list. So whenever we've all looked at it and said that it is either passing with conditions or passes without conditions, that's whenever it's brought forward to the planning commission.
The question at that level for staff should be simply, is the application complete? Without regard to whether it's a good project or not, or whether or not it will be ultimately approved, but if the application's complete, meaning all the X's are checked, they have all the elements, you know, fire, roads, fire, sewer, police, you know, once the application is complete, that's when it should be moved on to the planning commission. I agree, it's not an open records issue with the chairman being there, I do think it's an issue of paid staff working for the city and being here all day to have those meetings, and maybe it's less of an issue here, and maybe it might only take three hours to have those meetings.
Yeah, it took about three hours.
But, for example, Columbia, their entire Tuesday is dedicated, and to ask a private citizen who's already serving on the planning commission, which is a good thing, but it's definitely a sacrifice to serve publicly, and you get credit when things go well, and when things happen that people don't like, then everyone points the finger at you, and so those are tough decisions. But, you know, that process can take, those meetings can last all day, and so as a practical matter, I've never seen, I'm not saying it's improper, but I've never seen anybody from the planning commission or the chairman sit at those meetings, usually, usually that's what you're paying staff to do for the city.
That wasn't ever a requirement. When I was chairman, I just wanted to be there.
Gotcha.
And the thing about it is, when we had everybody in one room, it was really, we were able to work through things better than it going to one person and then going to another person, and I'm not saying it's being done wrong, I'm just saying, it just, that was just a question I had, if that was something we were gonna start back, I don't know if that stopped because of COVID, I don't know how long ago it stopped, but I just remember that when we were all in one room, we were able to, the applicant brought his project, we were able to just talk it out and talk it out with the authorities from the different groups, with us all together, it's sort of like Zoom meetings, they drive me crazy, because I like to be in a room and I like to talk face to face to people, maybe I'm old school, but when one person gets a part of it, another person, it just seems like there's something that, you know, I don't know.
If I ask a, sorry, mayor, to that point, one of the articles in the zoning requires a 45-day limit of the submission, you know, within the initial review, so the other part of this might be, how do we help, how do we help control the time duration so that we don't have a project that gets an initial approval as well, and then it gets postponed for multiple years before it comes back on? So I kind of see a similar process like this also helping ensure that we have a timely submission and review and...
It just seemed to be, when we all got in one room together, that it ran, I mean, it just, the whole thing flowed better and it was smoother, but that's just, that's just my opinion, so.
I don't, I mean, I don't think there's, I don't think there's a right or wrong answer there, I think if the process is run well and organized, then I think it can work well in many different styles, and I see it in many different styles in different cities. So I don't, you know, typically, the planning director will make that call, and if there's a better process, then it should be looked at, and the process should change as the city changes, you know, and so I don't have an opinion one way or another in Fairview, I want to be clear about that. But typically, that's staff-driven, that process, and once the application's complete, then it should come to, it should be put on the agenda. The planning commission does not want to waste their time on applications that are incomplete, because if you're thumbing through and the application's incomplete, then it shouldn't even be before you to consider at that point. So, you know, if you have applications that are before you that are incomplete, then I would, and I don't know if that's an issue or not, I assume it's not, then they shouldn't be before you. If the application's complete and it's being held with staff, I haven't heard that that's the case and wouldn't believe that's the case, that shouldn't happen either.
My comment is, in the day of the memo, your staff usually kept the supervisors and the mayor and people abreast of what business they were working on for the city. So if you do have an incomplete application, or you had five applications this week and none the next month, to me, it would be appropriate that a weekly memo to the mayor and the chairman of the zoning board should be automatic, and that way, the mayor and the chairman of the planning and zoning board will know what you're reviewing, what you're handling, and what you're not handling, and that way, they can keep up with your workload to help supervise, as well as to be abreast of any issues that are coming up. If you've got one project, a guy keeps coming to you six times, and he still don't have all his I's dotted and his T's crossed, the mayor needs to know, and the board of commissioners need to know, and the planning and zoning board needs to know, something may be wrong with our system, or it may be the person, but I just feel like a weekly memo, as I call them, should be sent to the appropriate people who are managing the city and helping to assist our employees, that's the way I would think it should be run.
Mr. Callie, you got anything to add?
Hey, thanks.
All right. This is Ms. Williams.
I'm good, thank you.
Mayor Anderson, anything else?
No, thank you.
Ms. Sinyard?
Nothing for me tonight.
Schulist?
I'm good.
Mr. Butler?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
While I'm talking, I'll go one more time. I really am pleased and impressed with our new attorney and the way he's gotten involved and our previous attorney, who was a gentleman, did not get involved, and I think it's helping us get on a straighter, more prudent path, and also better for our citizens. There are ways that we have to do things, and sometimes it's a bittersweet, but thank you for helping us.
Thank you, and I appreciate those comments, they're very kind. Mr. Magnner?
None tonight, thank you.
Keep it short, I just want to remind everybody again, well, I guess to say thank you, there was a lot of involvement on one of those, from the citizens and from staff and everybody, had a lot of involvement on one of our items tonight, and, you know, the planning commission is a tough thing sometimes to explain to people, you know, when you disagree with something but still have to vote in favor of it because it's what your job asks you to do. I think people just need to keep in mind, planning commission is here to do a specific job, and sometimes, you know, it might not be the outcome you want, but at the end of the day, we're doing our best and we're trying to do what's right, so, thank you. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
I'll move to.